Yeah, two fifty next year.
That is not allocated yet.
It's not allocated.
Not all of last year's allocation has been allocated.
I thought it was two seventy. Kevin, wasn't it five forty? It was two fifty?
I don't, it's not right in front of me, okay? As I know, is it's roughly half a million dollars, a little over.
How much? What's that? Two fifty off of five point five million. That's like five percent. That's not much, right?
No, I said that at the meeting and I said I'd love to dump it there, but when we ran the numbers. If you put.
It would be about five percent, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, we'll figure it out. If a million dollars is going to lower by um a hundred dollars.
Two hundred and fifty is twenty-five bucks.
Twenty-five bucks. Thank you very much. My math is as good as yours. Is twenty-five bucks going to make or break that project? No. People are going to be upset if it's five hundred and seventy-five dollars or it's five hundred and fifty dollars.
I agree.
Okay, and I thought that because that project was funded at one point seven five interest rate. And along with most of everybody that I spoke with, that it would be a bad use of the ARPA money. Because they're giving, basically giving you, the prime's one percent.
You might as well use low interest rates for something you can't get.
Point seventy, three quarters of a percent to use that money.
That point, that point I understand for sure.
It was one percent. That prime is now almost two. It's two percent, but now the prime lending rate, okay, is probably going to be another two percent on top of that. So you're looking at four, four point five. I don't have a, hey, that's what.
So this project here, rough allocation was seventy to eighty thousand is what, is that, am I hearing that correctly? For this, just this Rixon project?
Yeah, a year ago.
And how many water users does that serve?
Right now.
Five.
Now that brings up a question, Kevin.
Yep.
For the undersized lots on Rixon Avenue.
Yep.
The ones, as you go in on the left, there's two, three of them. Now, say this whole thing goes through and this whole water thing goes through and everything goes through. And the five seventy-five per year goes through. Until those lots are developed, what do they pay? Just the per diem? Only?
If they, once they become part of the Marshall Water District, they will pay a half EDU.
Half? Oh.
So they're going to pay two hundred and ninety, or two hundred and eighty dollars a month? Two hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month? Half, no, or a year, sorry, a year.
A year.
He's going back to them by default.
Okay, plus they're at the alarm.
No alarm.
No, they wouldn't pay at the alarm?
Neither are you paying or anybody else paying. We're not doing that. You can do at the alarm.
Yeah.
I can have um Mr. LaBerge go back and look at everybody's taxes and their assessed values. And we could tell you exactly what it would be at that alarm. Normally, he said the at the alarm works out good if you have a lot of businesses in your town. We don't have a lot of businesses in this district. So by doing it by EDUs, that way you could do the school at thirty EDUs.
Is a business one?
Huh?
There's a business one EDU in that? No.
So how would this garage be? There you go. That's a business on that street. How many EDUs would that be?
You could charge them one or you could charge them two EDUs. You could charge them five EDUs. It's all up to this board what you want to charge them for an EDU.
Well, what about like Rocks Grocery here, those places down in the Hamlet, Skyler Falls? They're not in the water district, correct? Is there any businesses in the water district itself besides? Is there any, I guess?
In the water district?
In this three hundred and three, yeah, because I've.
You still got the car dealership, the base of the hill.
Okay.
That's one.
The redemption center would be in there?
Redemption Center, yeah.
There's not a lot of businesses within the.
That's what I said. It wasn't worth it to go to add an alarm rate because what you would do is you'd take Mr. Dona's daughter up there in the house that's, you know, more than what the average payer has as a tax base in the house. Say her house, and I'm just throwing out numbers, is worth four hundred thousand dollars. She's going to pay a lot more.
Sure.
Than the person that's got an eighty thousand dollar house. Some people think that's the right way to do it too. They talk up to the board. That's something that, you know, the people should again, give their their opinion of.
That's not the way that we just, you decided to go with that? Or the board decided to go with?
It was proposed because USD ARD and um CDVG and most of the projects are all based on EDUs today. They like to see it based on EDUs.
I agree, and I agree with this just a hundred percent. I don't think that the, you almost get into like a socialism type thing when you have the rich paying for the poor, basically, at that point, if you're going to charge the rich more.
Well.
They're all getting the same service. At the end of the day, they're all getting the same water.
They are.
So why should people that pay more money?
But I mean, there are people that would say, well, they make more than I do, live in a bigger house. Uh, they should be able to pay more, just like they have to pay more when they pay their federal tax or state tax at the end of the year. Because they make more, they pay more. So I understand both.
Yeah, like Kevin, that brings up a good point, like for example, an apartment house like yours, just as an example, any apartment.
Yeah, I'm not even getting charged. I get my water for free.
Kevin, my question. How many meters? Say if you have, what do you have, four or two, whatever you have?
Two.
Would you have to put your second meter in there or do you have two meters now?
There's one meter now. I paid two separate um hookups.
So you'd be two EDUs.
I saved the town money by not having them put in an extra, because at the time, it was all grant. They did have a vote whether they wanted to go meter. But they didn't pay for the meters.
No, I remember that.
All right, it was a grant.
Yes, it was.
And there were some people that had to pay for updates because they weren't supposed to have a street meter vault. They were supposed to be able to go in their basement, but then because their basements weren't deep enough and the water couldn't be put in deep enough, then they added to the street vault. The street meter vaults, because those have to be below frost.
Yes, yeah.
So that was an upcharge that they ended up paying them. The grant wasn't the grant was when they first put it in. So I don't know how many of those happened. I did hear that there were a few that ended up that way.
Yeah.
Um, the meters have never been used because like I said, when I first took over in January twenty twenty, now we're back on Marshall Water District again, but uh I wanted to switch everybody to.
You brought it up.
I know. We wanted to, we wanted to switch everybody back to, I want to put everybody on meters so they're only paying for what they were using.
I agree with the meter rate. I haven't ever said anything about it.
I couldn't do that legally and have some of them pay a quarterly rate while others were paying from what I was told. Okay, don't get me wrong and I'll change it tomorrow morning, but from what I was told when I came in uh that EDU switch them all, I can't pick what residents on the district are going to be paid by meter and what ones are going to be paid by um a quarterly rate. So it was impossible without, and hence that's how we started with, how much is it going to fix the, fix River Street? And then after we got going on the project, they were like, why would you only try to fix River Street and go after grants for River Street when the whole Marshall Water District is in need of an update? I wasn't here when it was put in in nineteen fifty-three through nineteen fifty-six, and I wasn't part of the government.
Sure.
Okay, that allowed it to sit here and collapse for the last seventy years. But in twenty twenty-three, the system is going to be seventy years old. All right? It was only supposed to live fifty, his life expectancy was fifty and seventy-five years. So at the best, you may have five more years before some state agency comes in and says you need to replace it because its outlet is life expectancy and therefore you are not serving to the best of your interests. Your people that are on that water district. God help you when you go for the funding for that.
In five years.
In five years. That's correct. And 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 they may never, they may just say, hey, we're north, backwards north country, small town in upstate New York and never bug in. I don't know. I, as a town supervisor, am obligated to look at all of the facts. Even though they're going to affect me personally. All right, just like you said, I want to fire my house, three other houses. My bill is going to be over three or four thousand dollars.
Sure, I understand.
You think I want that? But no, I don't want to pay an eight thousand dollar bill if it goes another two years without getting done. All right, so are we done with that? Or did you have that done?
No, I didn't have any other things.
Thank you. So are you good with a plumbing area engineer? So I can let Ron know?
I'm good with it.
Okay, so that's Rixon. All right, so everybody's been advised of uh the big savings on the uh highway garage. So what you guys pledge to move forward with that project? Do you want to rebid it? Do you want to cut the scale of the project back? Roughly, they came up with seventeen thousand five hundred dollars of the savings. If we change the uh the grade system. I gave everybody copies of this. Um, I don't know what your pleasure is. I really was hoping we wouldn't have to use ARPA funding on this. That's still a possibility. Um, we still have money that is in the unallocated fund reserve. Uh, if it hold off a year and we put it in uh this year's budget or, I shouldn't say this year's, it's your twenty twenty-three budget year. And uh do it as a transfer as part of the budget. It would probably be a lot better than to do a transfer of funds this year. But I don't know um what will go up or what will go down. I know the housing market is finally popping a little bit. That was one of the things I go back to hit Dave's question, and that's why we've waited on uh reassess values to go to a hundred percent assessment for the last three years.
So I don't mean to interrupt though, so I brought up that the costs right now are overinflated. So what makes you think that this project won't be cheaper in two years regardless of what Lucas or anybody else thinks, building materials are building materials? They're at an all time high. They're going to come down.
But the cost of the projects, when you're looking at construction costs, is a little bit different than the housing market. Because right now, what you have to take in consideration, and I'm not trying to bill the lawyer and make you, you know, think I'm smarter than you.
No, I'm not saying.
All right, just get that straight. Right now, the money that they pump into infrastructure, okay? At the federal and state levels, is going to balloon out for, they figure at least eight more years.
Okay.
Okay, because the money has, that's what caused inflation to go up. And that's what caused people to bid three times more on a project than what it would have been a year ago.
Good.
Because they don't care because if I can bid half of more or three times more, I'm not saying everybody does that, but they know their projects are locked in. These construction companies are going to be locked into projects for probably the next eight years.
Sure.
To spend all this money that they just pumped out at the federal and state level. You're talking sixty-four billion dollars. We're all volleying for those same local contractors to do the work. And every town, there's fourteen towns, right?
Yeah, supply and demand, yeah. I understand, it's supply and demand. There's huge demand and only just so much supply.
And the same for materials.
Sure.
I hate it. I wish we'd have got this moving a year ago. I can't make it move any faster than what I can get funding for.
That's fair.
But I can't wait any longer.
Getting back to this, I'll just throw my opinion out. I think it should be rebidded. I think it should be rebid. This changing the bid around, I have kind of a problem with that. All of a sudden they want to replace this with a lower grade material.
That was asked for by our, our engineers.
But it's still not fair to the other contractors out there in the north country. They should be able to bid on this project.
They didn't bid on it.
Well, we don't know if they're going to bid now. Things have changed. Maybe they will bid. Let's at least.
Keep kicking this can right down the road.
Well, we will, because you know what? It isn't costing that much money to throw an ad in the paper and see who will bid it.
All right, we don't throw that, we don't throw that ad in paper. If you want to start writing the ads for the paper, you let me know. I will put you in charge of that.
I will. It's all right.
You want to do that? You're on the record right now.
We, no, listen, we have an engineering firm that we hired to do that.
Not, not, if you redo the whole thing. You're talking about rebidding. We, we, we had them hired to, to put this project out and to bid it out. He's gone above and beyond working as you just put down there that it's not fair that he did that. He didn't have to do that for us.
But there's only one bid on this project. There was only one bid.
Yep.
Now they want to change it around. Lower, lower some of the quality of the project, but they want to bid now. But there was only one bid out there. We should have put it out for rebid back then. Only one bid came in.
You're giving out misinformation, first of all.
Only one bid is out.
That's, that's the only true thing you said, okay? They did not contact us. Well, Barton and LeJudas contacted them. Because when I went in there and told you guys what it was, I said, do you want me to further this and see if we can lower the cost of it? And you were on that board, Reggie, and you said, yes, if you can get it lowered, then let's see what we can do if we can move forward with the program.
One.
Okay, but you don't get to play back and forth. That's all I'm saying. I do what the board requests me to do. Okay, I, I, I did not do anything that they didn't ask me to do. And furthermore, I don't, I don't want, well, I'm going to clarify the record like you do. Because you just said now they want to come back and give substandard materials.
I didn't say the word substandard. I didn't say that word substandard.
Pretty much that's what you looked for.
Material, it's cheaper material.
That ain't what you said. So we can play the tape back.
Who am I? Who am I to say the word substandard? I'm not an engineer.
He said cheaper materials, which in my mind would be substandard, but anyways.
Not really.
So again, that was Barton and LeJudas that had got ahold of them and asked that. They didn't have to do that. They said, we can look to see if there is something that is comparable, that is less than the aircraft aluminum that you wanted to utilize there. And it saved us seventeen thousand five hundred.
What would be wrong with rebidding it? What would be, would that hurt?
You can. We can rebid and rebid and rebid.
I mean, there's two more people on the board that are not here tonight. I'll let them decide.
We can keep stopping it and hold it up, and I asked that, and you're the one that wanted to stop it last year when I told you I, I I warned everybody on that board last fall.
I wasn't the only one that voted against it that night.
You voted for holding it up, not against it. I voted against it.
Wasn't it a three-two vote? So why are you picking on me?
I'm just saying, well, because you're throwing it back because of the issue we're in. And I warned everybody back last fall that this could go exponentially up in price from where we had uh last fall. And I also said to all of you, including Mr. Snyder, that we could do one bay at a time, put it in the bid. So he didn't have all his trucks out for the winter. And you went on the record for quite a while saying, whatever that man wants, he's the highway superintendent and he should get it.
Well, what does he want now? I haven't heard from him.
So, does he still want to squeegee the floors off that somebody filled with cement? Probably not.
He'll be at the next meeting, we'll ask him.
He was at the last meeting, you could ask him.
Kevin, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there any way you can talk to Mr. Snyder about it and see if you can make necessary repairs for him to get by on until, you know, it becomes more affordable? Is there any, like I know at one time he was talking about new doors and doing in front of the doors. Do you really need at this point to cut out those trenches again and everything for drainage and, or can that wait until a better time?
They can continue doing what they're doing right now. I spent, he tells me an hour and a half to an hour and forty minutes to get all that water off the floor and into the sun pump by squeegee. Yeah.
Oh, during the winter when the snow is melting off the truck.
You know, just a suggestion, maybe he can get.
A lot of money.
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of waste of time.
So the original bid.
It's time that they not plow under sand in the rocks.
So they're just adjusting the bid because materials went up in price as a.
Because everything's went up so.
So they rebided it, so that they could still, or they didn't rebid it, but they offered a different bid to be able to fit the parameters, but with a different material.
Upon our ask.
Sure.
From Barton LeJudas, who was an engineer.
And it's still staying at the original price that you guys want, that what they bid it at originally, by using this cheaper material? They're, they're still staying at that.
Other than it would save seventeen thousand five hundred dollars if we use, didn't go with the aircraft style.
Seventeen thousand five hundred dollars off the original bid? So I wouldn't, the board go with that?
Well, the, the board could still go with it. It's still, the project was projected to be at the high end sixty-five thousand dollars.
And what is it now?
The bid came in at two hundred and three thousand dollars.
Jesus Christ.
So.
So how long ago was this bid? This was in the fall, you're saying, of twenty-one? Over the winter.
We bid it first thing like February, March, don't quote me, but going into April.
So it was only a few months ago?
Yeah, the, the bid.
So I hate to go back to this. You're going to love me for this one. How long ago was the eight point one million dollars estimated for this water project?
January.
So has this gone up fifty percent too?
Has it gone up fifty percent?
Do you know?
I, I don't know.
You don't know?
I have no idea. That's what I'm saying.
Cause one, it would make sense.
Whatever, whatever it is, well, not necessarily. Because there's a difference between the, the USD ARD and the CDVG, the, the federal government and what they say a project should go up in cost.
Gotcha.
And uh engineers from giving a quote of what they think it's going to cost you. And they were beside themselves because it's their reputation.
The only reason why I'm asking is, and it's really only to help not waste time, I guess, is that if you know that this project's gone up, it sounds like three times the cost in only a matter of what, a few months? If this thing has even gone up fifty percent, if this project's twelve million dollars and you only have, you said, two point six million dollars of it paid for through grants, correct? And then the rest is a tax, tax liability, that's what the five point five, two point five. So say this project's even fifty percent more and it's twelve million dollars, it's dead. Project's dead. There's no way that people are going to pay eight, nine hundred dollars every year.
Or you do what you can do. You do the main from the bridge to the water tank out there.
So now I do understand why it would be hard to have a vote because people don't even know what they're voting for at that point.
River Street, which is in need of an upgrade. And I can't tell you whether we're going to get the other funding.
Right, I know, I know that part. I'm not trying to beat a dead horse on that. I'm just saying before you.
It's easy to say, why don't we just hold a vote?
I get that. I'm not trying to beat a dead horse about.
I mean, you've met hours with me to explain to you so you can grab some of it. But for me, like I said, when I put it, I tried to condense two and a half years into a page and a half to give them the information for the ones that knew weren't going to show up anyways.
Sure.
He goes, you're, it confuses me and I know. I know what you're trying to say.
Well, playing devil's advocate, and I, I, this is the last point I'll make on it and I'll leave it alone. What LaBurge says on it. Yeah, this may not be an unpopular opinion. Of course he's going to tell you that. They're making a shit ton of money off this project. So if you go out and send a letter to three hundred and three residents and it in any way discourages those residents for supporting that idea, he just lost millions of dollars. So of course he's going to tell you that.
Yeah, I know, but he is working for me and, and you're right. In matter of fact, when I talked to him today to ask certain aspects of this project moving forward. He goes, I'm the carpetbagger. His words, not mine.
Sure.
He goes, I'm the carpetbagger. I'm, I'm the guy in the room that stands to make, you know, maybe worse for him, probably three hundred thousand to half a million dollars on the project.
Sure.
So they should not listen to me. Other than to get the information or to ask me questions that I am obligated to give them the right answers to. And I don't believe that he's got it in him to lie, first of all, and he's never lied to me. But I don't believe that he would outright lie about anything.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not accusing him of lying about anything. I'm just accusing him of, not accusing him.
That's a real good, that's a real good point that Kevin's making. And just to touch upon that, what Ron LaBurge said the other night down there, and he said it twice. He said, I've got plenty of water. It's up to the people.
Right.
He said it like twice, and that's what upset me so much because there was only a dozen people there out of the three hundred.
Sure.
That's, that's why I've been doing all this. That's why Mr. Dona, whose daughter is one of the users, has, has spent hours going to people and explaining to the people on his own.
Without all the facts.
Oh, no, he had all the facts.
I'll tell you this, you can talk to anybody I ask to sign up. All I said to them is I neither promote this or put it down. I said, it's all I'm asking for is for a chance to vote and that you show up and voice your opinion. I did not give out any information other than that flyer, which I got from the screenshots of what LaBurge put up. I did not go out there and to try to discourage anybody from this.
But what I'm saying is that person, when they come in to vote, would not have all the facts. The only fact.
That's not for us to determine though. People voted for Joe Biden as president too. There's, I'm just, it's not for us to determine whether someone's vote is right or wrong. It's up to you to combat that misinformation and if you can't, then you lose. Or the town loses or whoever loses.
They should have full facts on what they are voting on. That was my whole point to have the information.
And really, with all respect, once again, that informational letter should have contained the things that you passed around with the cost. That should have been in that initial letter that everyone got.
I don't know what the cost is. I can only tell you what the.
Right, but I mean what Ron LaBurge put up on the board that night. Why couldn't that have been incorporated into the letter? Why not? Then more people would have went.
You still don't have the verbal explanation of every one of those slides that's up there and that's.
Well, there was only twelve people there. Come on.
There was, there was seventeen.
No.
But they weren't all there in Q C either.
There was no sign and sheet. How do you have a meeting without a sign and sheet?
It wasn't a meeting. It was an informational, that's.
A gathering, let me change the word.
Yeah, there was, there was no pledge allegiance done. It wasn't a meeting. It was an information. But that's all it was. Very.
We can argue all night about that.
Exactly.
So I'll bring the resolution in and we'll argue again the next meeting.
See, I didn't realize eight point one million dollars was the projected cost either. I, I didn't realize that. It could go anywhere, actually.
No.
It cannot go above eight point one million. That's the most that this project can.
Or you'd have to cut some stuff out.
Or we have to cut stuff up, or you would have to go to the New York State Comptroller's Office and get approval from the comptroller's office because it exceeds, don't quote me, but one point something percent.
But you're right, so right now, and that's, that's, that's the biggest problem I have with Kevin. And I think you're taking it too personally about it.
I'm not taking it too personal.
I'm just trying to express my opinion.
Yep.
Yeah, you're basically telling people for eight point one million dollars, you can buy a brand new car. But three months later, it might be a ninety-two Honda Civic. It all depends on how much money this is going to cost us. That's basically the analogy that you're giving because you have the power to cut, but still charge people the same amount of money for it. So you're selling this huge water project, but then if the cost goes up and you're still confined to that eight point one million dollars in funding, you may have to cut certain parts of that. So the people aren't getting what they were sold. Am I, am I mistaken somewhere?
The only, the only way it doesn't happen is if USD ARD comes back and says, okay, we will. The only, the only way it doesn't happen is if USDA ARD comes back and says, okay, we were gonna offset your cost at one point three million, but your project went up. Two million dollars. So now we're gonna re-underwrite you and the bond, excuse me, the grant instead of being one point three million now is three point three million dollars. There's a lot of variables. I can't answer them all. But yes, US, like I told you at the beginning of this, call USDA ARD and talk to Lucas Manning or.
Well, and you, and you and I are in agreement with that. You said that if I call them, chances are if we would kick the can down the road, it is gonna be more expensive. But the costs are going up right now and the can technically, if I'm not mistaken, has been kicked since January because that's where the original estimate comes in. So if you don't break ground until the fall, say, which sounds like it would maybe even be a conservative estimate, oh, spring of next year, that cost could have already ballooned, just like Lucas said. And I'm just going by exactly what you're telling me.
Like I said.
So then you're not getting everything that you were told that you were gonna get for that one.
And like I said, you can kill the whole project dead, throw away all the funding.
But what I ask is, whatever gets cut, when's that gonna get fixed? Cause that's gonna be the next question. This, this project comes back at twelve million dollars in the spring. You gotta cut twenty-five percent of the project now because it just went up twenty-five percent. When's that twenty-five percent gonna get fixed? Because now the people are paying five hundred and seventy-five dollars a month or a year for the next thirty-eight years, but twenty-five percent of the project's unfinished.
It's gonna come in at whatever it is, Dave. I have no idea.
I don't.
Say here, and, and, and if the product, cost of the project goes and exceeds eight point one, we can, we can scrap the whole thing.
The whole thing. So, okay.
Or we can reduce what the original project was and go from there.
I don't think any of the questions I'm asking are unfair. I hope, I hope you don't think they're unfair. I'm just trying to be educated about it.
Some of your analogies I don't like for you. You have the right to say any way you want.
That analogy I made about the car is a hundred percent correct? I'm being told that I'm gonna have a whole complete one hundred percent water system at this price. However, when you go to break ground six months from now, I might only get eighty percent. So you're gonna build me a house for a hundred thousand dollars, but I might only build eighty, build eighty percent.
So you are. You're being sarcastic. So if you go down to the car dealer and he says, okay, I can build you that car.
Yeah.
And I can order it today.
Yeah.
And it's gonna cost you seventy-two thousand dollars.
Sure.
And he puts it back in and he, he orders the car and it comes back and Ford says, oh, we can't do it for that anymore.
Yeah.
He's not gonna honor that to you. He's gonna tell you, okay.
Yeah, but I have a, I have a choice to say fuck you, bye. I don't have a choice to say that in this situation here.
What do you mean you don't have a choice?
And once, once, once the project starts, it's, it's start, correct? So the cost of materials start to go up.
Can I ask one question?
I don't have the choice to, to make at that point. We might not. Like I said, we might have to scrap the whole thing or you can, as a town, say, here's what we can get done and this is as far as we can go.
Kevin, can I?
But we can let it this for the next six months.
Can I just ask another question? I think we'd answer both of your questions right now. If we put this up the bid and it comes back in at twelve point five, we're obligated to go back to the district and say, people, this is the original. This is where we're at. We're not twelve point five. We have two options. One is we can cut this, this, and this, and still do this, this, and this. Or we can take the whole thing and take it off.
So there would be like a public hearing is what you're saying?
We have to do, because we're changing the scope of the.
That's a good point. So why don't we do it now?
What it is, Reggie? Break it, you're asked.
I, I would never again go ahead with a project that somebody didn't have the full understanding of scope of. Nor would I go through with a project without telling people that I could tell them that, hey, we're gonna get, like I told you, another three million dollars from WEA, another two point five million from the federal congressional fund. And we're probably gonna get the, the, the federal funding, uh, uh, infrastructure bill. I have no idea. I would never do that. The only, the only thing the other night was, was the information to let them know where we were right now with the funding. And where the, the project was if we didn't move forward with it. All right?
Yep.
I mean, everything else was, was already done. A year and a half, almost two years. It takes a lot of time for a project that size.
So if the lawyer comes back and gives you an answer that an election is permissible, is it the town's board's position to hold a vote?
I don't speak for the town board, but I would definitely get ahold of the town board and see what they wanted to do.
Is it your position as town supervisor to support that?
If.
If, if it's legal to have a vote, would you support a public vote?
I don't have a problem with that. I told you that before. I just don't know if I can.
No, and I know, I know. That's why I said if he comes back and says it's legal.
I told you that ten times.
Cause I know he's gonna come back and say it's legal. That's why I'm asking. So I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page here. I mean, there's nothing illegal about it.
I will tell you this, if, if you have to set it up, you may just lose your funding. Just to be honest. Because it's not gonna be done in a rock shot, brick shot manner. It's gonna be done right. Which means we're gonna have to approach it, at the earliest we could approach it would be the July, which means we wouldn't be able to hold it till August. Which means we wouldn't be able to let anybody know to September. And I don't know if we're gonna hold our grants if that happens. That's the only thing I'm gonna tell you. Or the bond. And you're gonna throw away eight point one million dollars, but that's fine. I'm only one in the water district, just like you just said.
I'm only one in the water district too. I get that.
But I, I don't agree. That's where you and I differ, okay? I don't agree with somebody voting on it without having the full information. Cause they don't know what they're voting on.
So it's our, so it's the town's obligation to get that information to the people if we have a problem. If you have a problem with how the information's flowing, then it's your job to get the information.
Agree. I'll disagree with you on that too. It's the town's obligation to provide the information. I, we cannot go door to door to tell everybody what to do. And even if I did, the, the, like, like I said, I could confuse the hell out of them without, here we go again. Okay, for how many hours?
Yeah, because you're not, there's no, there's no logical argument to that. If you're saying that the, the most, the town has done the most that they can, you're telling me right now the town has done the most that they can do to get the information out there because you can't go door to door and spend two hours talking with three hundred and three people.
And they, they don't have.
Informational hearings and everything. Then you've done everything that you can do to get this to a public vote. These people are as educated as they can be on this issue.
But they haven't taken out the offers.
They haven't taken.
No, but we haven't provided, we haven't provided the background for these people. We, we have failed that way. We have not given them a letter with all the criteria. They should have done all the criteria on there.
You're talking one instance.
And we've only got twelve people that showed up.
Every time we watch one of these, there's no reason why anybody shouldn't understand.
We have failed. We have failed. No, you have failed.
If we fail, we failed at what you asked us to do, which is what we did.
Watch your temper.
You have failed in terms of not providing these people the information, Kevin.
Watch your temper. That's all I'm gonna tell you.
There's a big PowerPoint up with the engineer being right here.
There was only twelve people there.
And there was three hundred and three letters that were sent out. Dave, why did you not stay at that meeting?
I had, I had obligations. I had to go home to my kids. But I, I just strongly disagree with that. I mean, you have six people show up, maybe to town board meetings, but you had a thousand people come and vote in the election last year. Voting and information is not the same thing. You cannot tell people that because you didn't come to an informational hearing or you didn't listen to me talk for three hours at the town hall, that you don't have a say in the project. It needs to be put on a public vote. It needs to be. And it's a great disservice to this town if it's not. And I, and I.
What I want, what I want you to do is I want you to go to three other towns and ask them what they would have did differently.
I don't.
And come back then.
What they would, they would have held a public vote. I can guarantee it.
You, you give.
I work in town politics throughout this county. They would have held a public vote.
You give me that.
They would hold one. And you say that you want to if it's legal.
If it's legal.
So even you agree with me, you just wanna make sure that you're doing it the right way.
But, but take my advice and ask those other towns. That's all I'm asking you. I've never lied to you.
And I'm not, and I'm just being honest with you.
Ask those other towns. After they've gotten through a permissive referendum, after they, no, excuse me, the public hearings. After they take the public hearings and they define where the project, you ask, ask them what they would do.
Kevin, I know you're pretty sensitive about this. I mean, you reside in the district, okay? You have homes in the district. You have apartments in the district. And it's quite clear the way you personally feel. But Kevin, you can't throw your feelings upon everyone.
And I'm not.
You've gotta let the people speak for themselves. You really do. And we'll do it by vote.
You're not even in the district.
So of course, but I'm on the town board.
Yep, so I am on the town board and unfortunately I am still a user in the district.
Well, that could be not unfortunate or fortunate.
So again, again, I said, I don't care what way it goes. I do care that we're gonna throw away that, that, all that funding. All right, but I'll tell you what, if, if they do that.
It's the people's choice at that point if they throw away a plan.
All right, is there anything, no, cause I got nothing else. Cause we're not, we're not getting anywhere, Sarah.
The only other thing, so is it okay if I introduce resolution at the next meeting?
Like I said, there are certain things you need to do. So just do it by then. Or let me know what it's going to be so that I can find out for sure how you do that. All right, I, I, there's, I know it has to be in writing. I know it has to be so many days before. And I just don't wanna get into any issues with it. So, yeah. Put it in writing, send me what you wanna do. We've got plenty of time. We've got two weeks or longer, so.
Not really. The meeting's on the nineteenth.
I was trying to move it up. So you got two weeks. All right?
Call ya.
All right.